Thank you Frank. Good evening, welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, November 12th. Read the agenda. At 7:00 PM we'll open our meeting. We'll start a public hearing for Chickie Flynn's alleged alcohol violation. 7:45 we'll have a public hearing for Dimitri's Red Snapper, alleged alcohol violation. 8:30 PM we'll have a public hearing for the Lafayette House, alleged alcohol violation, and 9:15, public hearing for the Renaissance Hotel, alleged alcohol violation. John, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic who sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, just one question in terms of procedure. Did you want to address the board before we start?
Yes, I thi- thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney David DeLuca, I'm special counsel to the town of Foxborough on alcohol licensing. I had been notified some number of weeks ago of a number of hearings to be scheduled here in Foxborough, and they have been scheduled sequentially for an evening tonight. There's another evening planned approximately a week from now, and then a third session three weeks from now. There are four license holders who are scheduled to be heard tonight. In the notice that was provided to each of those license holders, there was a suggestion that they could contact my office to discuss the nature of the proceeding to schedule before your board. I did in fact hear from or speak with each of the license holders or their representatives that are scheduled for this evening. At the same time, I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Keegan and Chief O'Leary to discuss the various hearings and the nature of the violations, and there will be recommendations from us as a group to your board. I do expect that each of these hearings is going to proceed on an agreed statement of facts. That is, I've heard from each of the license holders that there is no dispute as to the happening of the alleged violation. Therefore, it considerably shortens the nature of the hearing. It's not a disputed hearing. We'll have facts provided by Sergeant Noonan by way of a summary as to each of the violations, as to each license holder. Each of the license holders as well will have an opportunity to address the board with their own issues or concerns or any remedies that they have undertaken themselves. So each will have that opportunity. Following that, it will be the board's opportunity to deliberate on a proper disposition of each of these alleged violations, and you can do that immediately following each of the hearings, or you could take the hearing under advisement and decide at some later time what the appropriate disposition would be. That'll be your choice. But in this instance, and I do believe that by the way, each of the license holders, each of the scheduled hearings though at different times tonight are all here now, because of the nature of this public hearing, one that does not include any testimony or evidence from other members of the public, so long as each of the license holders is willing to agree to proceed even in advance of the scheduled time, we can move right through them. So with that, I would call to the table Sergeant Noonan, who will give us an outline of the facts at least as to that first license holder unless of course you have any questions at this point.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Sergeant Noonan.
Shall we start? Good evening Sergeant.
Have microphone. Sergeant Noonan, could you give the board a statement of your assignment in the scope of this operation?
On September 25th, 2014, under the direction of Chief O'Leary, I conducted an alcohol compliance check of all the licensed establishments in the town of Foxborough.
And how many licensed establishments are there?
Forty-two.
And how many establishments were you able to check?
I believe twenty-nine.
The others were either not open or unavailable?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the nature of the operation generally?
We followed our department orders on conducting a compliance check with a valid and authentic identification. What we do is we have the underage operative go through the rules and regulations that are spelled out clearly and explained to him. We have a plainclothes undercover officer watch the interaction between the underage operative and the establishment staff. During this operation, the underage operative would go in with his valid, true and authentic Massachusetts vertical license which clearly indicates that he's underage twenty-one and actually spells out in red letter and that he is underage twenty-one and tells the date that he will turn twenty-one. In this case, he turns twenty-one in 2016, and he's supplied monies to purchase alcohol with.
Okay. And did you say that you have an undercover officer in the establishment at the same time?
Either within the establishment or within the eye's view from outside the establishment.
Okay. And you position yourself somewhere?
I do.
Where is that?
In a close proximity to the establishment.
Okay. Is your operative here tonight?
He is.
Could you point him out? He's pointed out the operative, his name is Mr. Marinelli, underage twenty-one. And how does this operation proceed generally from there, once the operative enters the establishment?
He's explained thoroughly what he's supposed to do. Our goal is to not trick anyone, is just to go in and ask for alcohol beverage, and if he's asked to produce his identification, he will produce his valid, true and authentic under-twenty-one identification. If he's not asked for identification, he will then attempt to purchase alcoholic beverage.
And it's not in a fashion such as a pre-selected beverage that he has to order, or is there some special?
We just made it simple, he's just continually asking for a Bud Light.
A Bud Light beer. All right. With respect to any publicity of this type of operation, was that undertaken at any time?
It was. A letter was sent out to each liquor license holder dated January 27th, 2014, outlining a series of goals that we had for the year, as well as also advising them throughout the year, we would be conducting an alcohol compliance check. There was also an article written in the August 28th, 2014 Foxborough Reporter, outlining again, our goal is to combat underage drinking included in compliance checks.
And this operation was conducted on what day?
A Thursday, September 25th.
All right. That concludes the background information. I think at this time it would be appropriate to call the first license holder who I think is Chickie Flynn.
Sir, someone represent?
David, should we read the public hearing notice?
Yes.
Legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts general laws annotated Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Chickie Flynn's 94 Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Thank you.
Sergeant Noonan, focusing for a moment on the operation at Chickie Flynn's, could you tell the board how that proceeded?
At approximately 8:00 PM, the underage operative entered Chickie Flynn's and made his way up to the bar. He engaged the bartender in a conversation, at which time the bartender asked, "What do you like?" The underage operatives asked for a Bud Light. The bartender asked if he wanted a bottle or draft. The underage operative responded that he wanted a draft, at which time the bartender requested his identification. The underage operative presented his true, valid and authentic Massachusetts driver's license, which is a vertical driver's license that represents him being underage twenty-one. He produced that to the bartender. The bartender looked at it, returned it back to him, and then proceeded to pour him a glass of beer, which he served to him. The underage operative took possession of the beer, made payment for the beer, and then left the establishment.
And did you take possession of the receipt?
I did.
Is that included in the materials?
It should, yes.
Okay. And what happened next?
We left the area, and I made contact with, by the time I tried to get back, the establishment was closed. I made contact with the owner the next day and advised him of the violation.
Thank you Officer. At this time, I don't know if members of the board have any questions for Sergeant Noonan.
Any questions? No. Rule set, thanks.
Then at this time, we do have representatives of the license holders here who may wish to address the board.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, I think it will be office's testimony?
Pardon me?
They offered this testimony?
Yes.
Should they be sworn in?
Yeah, that's it. Right hands please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I hope you go ahead?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your names for the record, please?
Jimmy Kelly.
Christine Kelly.
Thank you.
Now's the time, if you have any information or statement you'd like to make sure.
On September 25th, one of my bartenders served a drink improperly. The license was underage. It happened. I don't know why it happened, it shouldn't have happened. It was a mistake. Big huge mistake, and it won't happen again. And we have a new thing that we put together to deal with it. I don't have a lot of employees, I have like four part-time bartenders and five part-time waitresses, and this is my solution.
Thank you.
I've had liquor licenses for thirty-five years, and this is the first time this has ever happened. And I'm very upset.
All of your staff is tip-certified right now?
Yes.
So, these rules are posted, and employees?
Have to sign off on them.
Yes.
How often do you review the rules with them?
They have to sign it every single year, and actually, the rules one through three, I believe, on the sheet have been enforced since we have been opened.
What's the status of the employee of the bartender at this point?
He was cut three shifts, and I don't want to fire him. He's a longtime employee of mine, twenty-five years or so, my best employee. I don't know why it happened. He's the sharpest person that's ever worked for me, and he's going to be the one, well, Christine's going to teach that first class that's on number four, and he's going to have to teach the rest of them, because I figure that's what he should do. And I don't know what else to say.
Thank you.
Has he gone through recertification since the incident?
Yes, he has. And I just want to take this opportunity to say how sorry we are, even though that doesn't seem appropriate at this point. We are a very small business. We are new to Foxborough. We've been here four and a half years, and we've tried to do a lot for this community. The first time we were in front of this board is to ask for this license, and we feel that we've become a very strong part of this community in many different aspects, and I please hope you take that into consideration.
Any other questions or comments?
It was a Thursday night, was, with respect to capacity, was it a quiet night? Was it a busy night?
It was, there was nobody there.
Now your staff, do they ask for identifications on people that they judge to be young, or is it that they ask for identification from everyone? Is it a judgment call?
A judgment call is at least thirty years old. For Patriot Game Days and for, well, that's really the only time we're open, we're not open for concerts, but we do have tip-certified doormen specifically just for that, and every single person is ID'd.
What would be the harm of carding everybody regardless of age? Take the guessing right out of it.
We actually did do that at the beginning, and because now, I'd say ninety-five percent of our customers are regulars. Regulars meaning that they're there three, four times a week, five times a week with their families for dinner. So in that respect, we don't ask them to pull them out all the time.
And over forty, and up. Older crowd.
You know, the fact if you, if the audience could see Mr. Marinelli, he's definitely under thirty. He's very young looking. And if your establishment has regular customers, I would think that someone like Mr. Marinelli coming in, asking for a beer.
Absolutely, I don't disagree.
You know, I mean, that would put, you know, I mean, that would cause me, if I were behind the bar, that would cause me to take notice. And the fact that they, and I can't stress enough, an underage, under-twenty-one license is a vertical license. It's very easy to spot that it's a vertical, that it's an under-twenty-one, and the fact that it was handed to the bartender paid no attention, the beer was given anyway. He could be a twenty-five-year employee, you know, you wonder about the judgment.
It was served, and there's no good excuse. Period. And I don't have one. I, you know, still mad.
That would conclude the hearing with respect to this particular license holder. It is now the opportunity for the board to take the matter under advisement and move on to the next, or decide by way of disposition this particular matter. I should say that this license holder, as well as the others to come tonight, we have found have no prior history with respect to alleged violations with, of this nature, of any nature. So you should know that is true here. Insofar as recommended disposition, myself together with Mr. Keegan and Chief O'Leary would have a range of disposition options for your consideration, again, either now for this license holder or at the conclusion of the hearings that you're about to hold for the rest of the evening.
Why don't we talk about how we'd like to proceed? Jim, do you have any preference?
So if the testimony's over, we would close that portion completely.
We can close, we can make a finding, and then we could make our recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, the way that these are scheduled tonight, we've got seven, 7:45, and 8:30, so if there's no, if the issues are not being contested, it seems like we have plenty of time to discuss it.
We don't have to hold to the times though.
Well, the 7:45, it could be earlier than 7:45.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. I have a set thing in my mind. Maybe it'll change listening to the other three following, how this can happen and what our process is, but I don't have a strong preference. If we want to close it and deliberate and come to a conclusion, and then move on to the next one, I'm fine with that, or wait till the end, I'm okay with that too.
David, just in terms of keeping each one of these isolated, is that something we should consider in terms of dealing with them one at a time?
They are their own facts. Each one of them may vary, and in some respects, you certainly have the right to consider the facts of each case individually. The point I made earlier is that simply that they all come to you as agreed that the violation has occurred and no prior history. So only in that respect do they bear the similarities.
Okay. I'll say my preference would be to close each one out as we go and treat them individually. That way I can not be trying to carry forward any comparisons of any kind.
Well, what I'd like to do is hear all the cases and then deliberate at the end. That'd be my preference.
Okay, so that's different. What do you think?
I'd like to hear them all and then deliberate at the end as well.
Jenny?
I'm afraid that if you hear them all and deliberate at the end, they'll bleed into one another, although they're pretty similar. Jeez. I suppose it's easier just to do one at a time and get more with that. So I would, I think that.
So Jim, you're the type?
So let's listen to all of them and then deliberate after. I think we can do the deliberations in such that, I certainly am not going to let them bleed into each other, they're going to be still fresh in my mind, but I'd like to deliberate at the end, I guess.
Okay.
One other thing, we do have a public input component to this as well. The other ones we had, if someone's in the audience who want to say something, so I don't know if anyone's here to do that, but that should happen individually rather than at the end.
With all due respect, Mr. Deville, that's not normally a component of a disciplinary hearing under Section 34, which is where this proceeding is held. The license holder has the right to address the board. It's not the same unfortunately as a hearing to issue a license where, you know, the issue of public good is before your board. This is purely an issue of discipline that's between the board and the license holder.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I, and correct me if I'm wrong, had we not, have we not done that on all the other ones that we've done over the past several years? If you're saying not, that we shouldn't do it, then that's fine, but I think we have done that.
I don't know what the practice has been.
I don't recall what it was doing last year, because we did it this time last year.
I remember some people coming in and...
I remember in the past that there have been public, you know, people from the public who have made statements, just their opinion on a particular situation.
Yeah, because we've asked for comment. And it's fine if you're guiding us not to, I, that's fine.
Not required, I guess is what I'm saying.
All right.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the next one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, should we close the public hearing?
As to that license holder.
Right.
Right, and we'll open a new one.
Okay.
I move that we close the hearing on Chickie Flynn's alleged liquor violation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't want to complicate it, but where, at what point do we vote in the facts? Because in order for us to deliberate and come to a, the second part, don't we have to vote on the facts?
Whether or not you can find a violation?
Correct.
Yes.
In other words, we've heard the testimony, but before we close it, we make a motion that we agree.
A violation has occurred.
That a violation has occurred to which...
All I can tell you is that it's been agreed in each one of these.
Okay, I'm not being confrontational, but the other ones that we've had have been agreed, and I remember making motions to that point. I don't want to get to the point where we put conditions on something and then we've never voted that there was an actual violation.
So you're saying we have to have a motion to accept the facts as presented to us, and that we agree that there was a violation?
I think the motion, there has to be a motion of the facts to be accepted.
Yeah, I think that's proper.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that there be a motion that...
Prior to closing, so we have to reopen it again?
Reopen it and make the finding.
Okay. I move that we reopen the hearing that we just closed, with Chickie Flynn's. All those in favor? All right, okay.
Want to make the motion?
Sure. Give me a minute here for a second, please. Which is the...
I have a note that I wrote.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could, I was just going to take it off the letterhead.
Tell me if this is correct, David. I move that there is a finding of fact that the employee of, one more time, LLC DBA Chickie Flynn's served alcohol to a minor. Is that correct?
Yes.
I would say in accordance to the letter of October 20th, 2014, because that covers what, this is all the detail in the description.
Yeah, we accept the facts of the case as presented.
Okay, so, and we accept the facts of the case as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we can close the hearing, correct?
So now I make a motion to close the hearing on Chickie Flynn's alleged liquor violation.
I'll second that again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we can move to the next hearing. It's Representative Dimitri.
Should I read the legal notice?
Yes, you'll have to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12th, 2014, at 7:45 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts general laws annotated Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Dimitri's Red Snapper to Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just at the outset, sir, do you agree to waive the timeframe for the hearing? We do. Okay. So we'll proceed with, again, an agreed statement of facts provided by Sergeant Noonan in this matter. Sergeant Noonan?
On September 25th, 2014, at approximately 5:46 PM, an underage operative working with the Foxborough Police Department entered Dimitri's Red Snapper. The underage operative made his way to the bar. A female bartender approached him and asked if he would like a drink. The underage operative ordered a Bud Light, at which time the female bartender retrieved a Bud Light bottle from behind the bar, opened the beer bottle and put it in front of the underage operative. At no time did the bartender ask for identification. A short time later, after taking possession of the beer, the underage operative asked to cash out, at which time he proceeded to pay for the beer, received change and a receipt. All this, this transaction was seen by an undercover plainclothes officer.
And was the receipt recovered in this manner?
It was.
Was there anything further? Did you notify the license holder subsequently?
I did. I went in and spoke to the owner, advised him what happened, and I also spoke to the bartender.
That night, or?
That night, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further from Sergeant Noonan?
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions?
Questions for Sergeant Noonan? Nope.
The facts are the identification was never asked for.
In this instance, it was not asked for.
Okay. No, that was... Rule set, okay. Thank you.
Insofar as the license holders, you have the opportunity to address the board however you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Sworn in.
I'm sorry, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I hope you go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members. My name is Phil Mackey, as counsel for, and on behalf of Dimitri's Red Snapper, with me is Mr. Nick Panagopoulos, the owner of Dimitri's. And we agree to the facts as presented by the police department. There is no dispute what happened, and there is no dispute what happened was wrong. I'm not sure if you remember when Mr. Panagopoulos took control of the license several years ago, and significant cost, well over and above... and at significant cost, well over and above what a normal license would go for these days just because of the issues with the intarsia and that problem. But nonetheless, he understands both the value of the license, he understands what had to have happened was wrong, he understands the responsibility goes with the license. Accordingly, he has discussed this with the bartender who did serve the underage operative, and her shifts have been cut down from five to two. And that's not as a disciplinary measure, it is more of a measure of basically letting her have more time to rest and be alert on the job and function as one should expect. They have further re-infirmed, basically, a card everyone policy as was discussed or submitted by the police department. Identification was not asked for. We understand the problem with that, and we are taking steps to make sure it doesn't happen again. Additionally, even though the restaurant staff in its entirety had been certified back in June 10th of 2014 with the stop training, personnel changes over fairly often in the industry, and they are scheduling, again, an entire recertification of everyone who works in the restaurant basically forthwith as soon as they can schedule a class. Again, all the employees will be required to basically recertify. And again, this is a first-time violation for Demetrius Red Snapper, first-time violation for Mr. Panagopoulos. He has operated restaurants for quite a while in Foxborough. He is a somewhat of a fixture on Route 1 and would like to remain as such. Again, I guess this is asking for the board's consideration in whatever leniency you may be able to grant. No one is disputing what happened. Steps are being actively taken to make sure it does not happen again, and we would like the board's consideration of those when you deliberate as to what happened. The only possible request that we would have is after a period the board feels appropriate, whether it's a year, two years, if in fact there are no further violations, because this is a one-time offense, we would ask that you consider expunging the record after whatever remedial measures that the board feels necessary have been taken. And again, there's a proven track record, again, of no violations and full compliance with the rules and regulations of the ABCC, the town of Foxborough, and the state of Massachusetts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, do you want to ask a question?
It was, again, it was a Thursday night, was the premises busy?
Can I hear?
Was it?
The premises busy.
On a Thursday night, was the bar busy?
Yes, I told you the truth. I open the door, I close the door, 15 hours a day. This day happened to be my brother's hospital. I go and pick up the time, coming inside the building. The officer comes and says to me, Nick, this one happened there. I screamed, but too late, I am not there.
Sergeant Noonan, was the, whoever was there with, with Mr. Marinelli, was it busy?
There was one other person at the bar.
Just one, one other patron?
One other patron at the bar, and then the restaurant had some patrons in the restaurant area.
All set? David?
You're aware that each, you mentioned that you go through turnover as, you know.
Yes.
Pretty standard to the industry. You're aware that each new employee has to be trained within 45 days?
Yes, we are.
And not, not until, you're not supposed to wait until the next training?
Correct.
Period for, okay.
If I may clarify, I in no way insinuated or did not want to that this training for the entire waitstaff is the only thing they do. It's just, we are not simply going to make sure the new employees are trained, but rather the entire staff, even if they have been trained, are going to be retrained.
Do you think annual training is enough?
Do you think that's often enough training?
Oh, yes. Never stopped to train people. It's time, now it's come back, New Year's, they're going to be again, everybody, you have certificate.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
The type of patron that comes to your establishment, is it, do you have many patrons that are 21 to 25? I mean, the appearance of Mr. Farinelli, is that an unusual event to see someone?
Every single day, I scream to the bartenders for this thing, careful, doesn't matter, 25 years old, you have to check ID. And this day, 90% of the bar check. The person I scream, I say, careful, this guy, you make sure, check ID. And this day, I am just coming from the hospital, the way I said before, I bring my brother, and the officers working inside say, Nick, this one, this one. It's too late for me.
I know that there's a lot of turnover in the restaurant industry, but a notice was sent out, I believe in January, that compliance checks like this were going to happen during the year. Was everyone on your staff aware that this could happen at any time? Is this a, is this a topic of conversation amongst your staff?
I am 35 years before I give a tarsia the building. Never have one problem for all the town, all Board of Selectmen, for any person. Never have the chief here, and before I changed three chiefs before Chief Olari, and never have problem.
Or was the staff aware that these stings could take place?
Yes.
They were all aware?
Never have any problem, yes. I am there in 1971 to give to a tarsia my birthday, and to 2000, never one problem.
Jim?
Mr. Panagopoulos, Attorney Mackey is saying that the bartender wasn't punished, but her hours reduced in order to be more attentive, so less hours she can be more attentive. Did you speak to the bartender on why the person was incarded? Was not attentive?
Yes, from the officer.
Okay.
Why you not check the ID? It's here, the witness himself, he can tell you. And now, still there, but not there.
So I guess the question is, why, why did she not card somebody that came in that looked as young as this person?
I don't say, little bit, I don't know. I, I can, I can understand exactly what happened this year. Maybe say, why you keep to there? Because I don't have somebody to replace right away. I have everyday newspaper, this one to find people too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So in this situation, up until this point, were the bartenders instructed to just card people who were looking a certain age, or was your policy to ask for ID for all patrons who came in? Because you've changed it now that you'll be carding, they'll be carding everyone. Was that your original policy, or that's new?
Every single person, now you, it's about three, four months working.
Okay.
There, it's annoying, like yesterday. But I don't know, a little bit, I can say something.
Okay. Do you have any signs up for your employees reminding them of the requirements you do?
I have both side, because the function and the form. Two signs, all one.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have, do you have a calendar near the bar that, I noticed, like at the liquor stores, they'll have a calendar and says, if you were born today, you're, what was it? It gives the date where you're 21, you're okay. So what you can do is, you can compare a license to the, to the date.
No, I don't have, no.
That might be a good thing to do. Besides looking at the licenses.
Would you pull one up?
I have to.
Any other questions?
Good, no, good.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the findings, to accept the findings of fact that the employee of the DNN Corporation LLC DBA, Demetrius Red Snapper, and Demetrius did in fact serve alcohol to a minor as outlined in the letter dated October 20th, 2014, and we accept the findings of the letter as presented.
I'll second that.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I close the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I move that we close the hearing for Demetrius Red Snapper in regard to liquor, alleged liquor violations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Third is scheduled with Lafayette House, I think it is?
Yes.
Read the legal notice. Notice hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12th, 2014 at 8:30 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass. Pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws annotated, Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend.
I understand that the Lafayette House is represented tonight by Mr. Ken Young?
Ron.
Ron Young. Mr. Young, you agree that to waive your right to a hearing at a later time as was initially advertised?
Yes.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? Testimony you're about to give, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
We'll proceed again with a statement of facts from Officer Noonan in this case. Officer Noonan, would you give the board a statement of facts relative to the Lafayette House?
On September 25th, 2014, while conducting an underage compliance check at all the licensed establishments, underage operative entered the Lafayette Restaurant at approximately 8:09 PM, made his way to the bar, had contact with a female bartender. Female bartender asked what the underage operative wanted, he responded Bud Light. She asked him if he wanted a Bud Light bottle, excuse me, asked if he wanted a bottle, a Bud Light, a bottle or a draft. The underage operative requested a draft, at which time he was served a Bud Light draft without being asked for identification. The underage operative took possession of the beer and then later asked for, to cash out, at which time he received a receipt, made payment, and then left the bar.
Was this transaction observed by either you or one of your colleagues?
There was a plainclothes undercover police officer in the establishment.
And you said that there was a recovery of a receipt made in this case?
There was no recovery, the underage operative left it at the bar at that time.
All right, no further questions for Officer Noonan unless members of the board may?
All set? Thanks.
Was the, was the bar busy at the time, or was this a?
I didn't make it inside. It's, it was a Thursday night, 8 o'clock.
Were you there, sir?
No, it's actually at a public hearing, but it was not busy, because I looked on my cameras.
Okay, so in other words, the bartender wasn't distracted?
Whether the bar was busy or wasn't busy, there's no excuse. Because when Officer Noonan called me the next day, I won't repeat what I said to her, but I fired her immediately. I didn't even let her finish talking. I says, you're fired. And I says, furthermore, if you go to work somewhere else, I will find out where that is, and I will call that owner to tell them what you did in my business. And furthermore, I suggested to special counsel that the town should consider arresting the bartenders. Because here's the issue. She came, she served a minor. Let's say your child walks in there, she serves him, and he's involved in an accident afterwards. I think we all have a problem at that point. Also, they know they're going to get fired by me. I've already fired like four people in 22 years. So it's pretty cut and dry that now my business, which I wasn't there, I was at a public meeting, she could steal money from me, because she knows she's gone. And I, for, you have a disgruntled employee who's going to give their notice, and they know it's a sting, and they do it. And they, there's no repercussions, you don't see her here today. As far as notifying the employees, I do notify them. I actually, when we get a letter from the town, we make a copy of it. We attach it to every paycheck. We make a copy of the letter, post it on employee bulletin board, highlight it, and we reiterate it. For some reason, I don't know why, we did not get this last letter, but that is still not an excuse. I actually liked it when the police officer used to walk into the bar and say, here you go, Ron, you know, just want to give you a heads up, be on the ball. Because the employees then go, why was he here? There's a sting operation going to be going on in the next three months, and you'll get a copy of this letter. It really drives it home when that blue shirt's standing in your building. And we have a standard policy, I have a couple of them. One, if they're under 30, card them. If they come in later in the evening, I don't even care how old they are, find out why they're coming in. As I always say, no one gets out of bed at nine o'clock at night and takes a shower and comes to Lafayette House. That's why on game day, if it's a night game and it's an 8:20 game, we close at 8:30 because there's nothing good going to happen when those people come out of that stadium. And there's no excuse for it, and I will not tolerate it. She was, that was her first bartending job, but what was interesting out of it was she's 49 years old, and she had just taken time off, you know, a couple months or a month earlier to take her daughter to college, who was not 21. And I says, just think, there's somebody out there now potentially serving your daughter. So. And, you know, I mean, we know all our customers, and, I mean, it's obvious when somebody walks in. You know, I mean, even during the day, if someone walks in and I don't recognize them, I get suspicious, you know? There's more issues than just, you know, illegal drinking, you know, they might be going to rob you. There's all kinds of issues. So I'm, we're always on the awareness of it. That's all I have to say.
You're saying this year you didn't receive, somehow didn't receive?
Yeah, you know, you can't blame the police department, you know, post office, it could have been a new postman, might have got stuck with another envelope.
But you've been around a long time, you know these happen every year.
Yeah, yeah. And everyone is tip certified. Just by coincidence, our, November is the month that most of my employees' licenses for tips expire. So Campbell Trent's already been in to get that done, and I don't wait 45 days, I tell them it's conditional employment, I give them 14. You know, I don't want somebody there 45 days and then say, oh, well, yeah, I forgot about it. So they can either do it online or do it in a class.
Do you think annual training is enough?
I don't have employee turnover as much as, you know, maybe some other places. I think with, with those letters and the training, it does help. I mean, my wife is very rarely there, and I made her get tip certified. She goes, what do I have? I said to her, everyone has to be tip certified. Front of the house, you know?
How do you, how do you determine who's 30 years old and who's not?
That gentleman right there is obviously not 30 years old. And anybody who thinks he's 30 years old is an idiot. And that's literally what I told her.
So do you think that policy is, is good enough?
It is with people who can think, that's why I fired her, because she can't think correctly. I'm not going to give her a second chance, there is none.
Right.
None. It's non-negotiable. Just like, you know, when special counsel, he says, well, you know, I says, no, it's cut and dry. I looked at the video camera after Officer Noonan called me. It was very clear what she did. It was very clear what she did.
What would be the harm of carding everybody?
I would say to you, in my business, probably 99% of the people are 50 years old. That's what even makes it more obvious that he's underage. I mean, my son's 20. If he's in, when he's in there, he stands out like a sore thumb. That gentleman there stands out like a sore thumb. One, he's not known to the establishment, and two, he's underage. He's not even close to 21.
Right.
I mean, I, I, you know, sometimes we'll, we have a funeral correlation. So you're going to get a mixed audience of people in there that normally aren't in your business. And it's very obvious who's not 21. And, you know, this coming Saturday, we have a family bringing a party there, and they says, "Well, we have a child who's 17." And I said, "Well, you've, I want to, why don't you point him out to us so we definitely know who he is?" And I said, "And no one better buy him a drink." Which has happened. You know, where an adult tries to buy a child a drink, you know, a 21-year-old. Don't allow it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Ron. So I'll make a motion finding a fact that the employee at the Lafayette House served alcohol to a minor as outlined in the letter stated October, dated October 20th, 2014. And the board accepts the findings of the letter as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we close the hearing in regard to the Lafayette House alleged liquor violations.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The final hearing that you had scheduled tonight was for the Renaissance, Renaissance Hotel. Representatives here?
Okay, and I'll read the legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the board's selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12th, 2014 at 9:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass. Pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts, Massachusetts general laws annotated, Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Thank you. Raise your right hand. Testimony about to give, the whole truth, nothing but truth, Sal, you got?
I do.
Okay. Do you also agree to waive your right to the timed hearing at 9:15 or 9:45?
Yes, Counselor.
Absolutely. With that, then we'll proceed with a statement. Sergeant Newman, Noonan, could you give the facts to the board concerning the matter of Renaissance Hotel?
On September 25th, 2014, at approximately 6:58 PM, while conducting underage compliance check on the licensed establishments in Foxborough, the underage operative entered the Renaissance Hotel bar area and made his way to the bar. He made contact with a female bartender who asked what he wanted. The underage operative ordered a Bud Light, at which time the female bartender asked if he wanted a Bud Light or a draft. The underage operative ordered a draft, at which time the bartender proceeded to pour him a draft and then serve it to him. The underage operative took possession of the Bud Light draft. At no time did the bartender ask for his identification. At some point, the underage operative asked to cash out, at which time the bartender produced a bill. During that time, I actually walked into the bar area and saw the underage operative with possession of the beer.
So you, you made observation yourself in this instance?
I did.
And was there a receipt provided to you for the purchase?
There was.
No further questions for Officer Noonan in this case?
Thank you.
If members of the board don't have any questions, then I'll turn it over to the representatives from Renaissance, who I believe have some information or would like to make statements.
Good evening, thank you. Attorney Stephen Miller, McDermott Quintian Miller. With me is Norman Demers. Also, Scott Williams, who's the Assistant General Manager and manager of record, and Vic Coker, who's the food and beverage manager. We don't dispute the facts. This is a very upsetting situation. Mr. Demers is going to explain to the board what action we've taken. This particular operator, licensee, is a client of my firm. They own, I think, five other hotels, four other hotels in the Commonwealth and some, you know, the jurisdictions. To my knowledge, they've never had a violation in any of them, and they have very strict policies. But based on this incident, they're even more strict. So Mr. Demers would like to address, address you.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I would like to publicly apologize to the board on behalf of our ownership and the management of the Renaissance Hotel for failing the recent compliance check conducted on September 25th. As I indicated to my entire team at that time, any and all of the work accomplished since opening in May of 2009 was immediately compromised when we let our guard down and allowed this to occur. Every member of the team here is well aware of the impact this has on our ownership and their business, our Patriot, Patriot Place partners, as well as our standing in this community. I would like at this time to briefly summarize for you the measures we immediately enacted, as well as those that are in process for the property to continually address our management responsibility. With regard to the night of the 25th, upon learning of the infraction at approximately 11:30 PM, the restaurant manager alerted myself, Scott Williams, the assistant manager, and Vic Coker, the food and beverage director, either through email or a phone call, which is our protocol if something happens. The bartender in question that evening that served the guest was immediately notified of the infraction. They were explained what this, the situation was, and following our company guidelines was suspended immediately. And then employment was terminated in due process per our company's zero tolerance policy that is in place for all our hotels. The food and beverage manager on duty that evening was documented for lack of oversight during the timeframe of this event. The management team is required to always be present on the floor during peak service times in the outlets, and their responsibility regarding the management is very clear. Over the span of the following two days of the incident, two mandates were enacted per my direction. First, all beverage service staff was scheduled for mandatory alcohol awareness retraining that took place on Tuesday, October 7th. This is conducted by Mike Marcantonio, an alcohol policy training expert who specializes in this area and is a resource that we have, that we have used proactively in the past. Secondly, I also scheduled our company loss prevention officer to conduct tips training classes that took place on October 14th for all our beverage service associates. All staff per our company is required and must be tip certified, and we required all to be immediately recertified due to this incident taking place. In addition, we currently have an event day policy to check all IDs for all guests. And we've changed that to every day, regardless of events at the stadium or not. We have had an event day ID check policy in place since the summer of 2013 per my conference with our food and beverage director. And now we require, as of September 26th, ID check for any and all guests requesting alcohol service. That is our zero tolerance policy in place. Also, daily stand-ups, we have an alcohol awareness session that is conducted with all our staff for every shift, every day. In recapping, this was and has been extremely frustrating and certainly an embarrassment for me and the hotel management staff. Since opening in 2009, we have been very successful in the management of our beverage licensing guidelines. We took significant pride as a team each time a compliance check happened and we correctly identified the individual and did not serve them. The entire management and service team was devastated when this single incident, based on the poor judgment and decision-making by one individual, erased five years of 100% cohesive and focused efforts. Our relationship with the town of Foxborough, our cooperative efforts with the Foxborough Police Department, and our standing with our Patriot Place partners was immediately tarnished. And we now, and we know that this will be very difficult to erase. We will, however, continue to be diligent in our responsibility to the privilege of serving alcoholic beverages in this location. We are fully committed to continue this successful operation to the future and believe that the measures put in place now and our concentrated efforts daily will ensure that we are responsible and compliant in operation of a business within the town of Foxborough. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate any and all considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Demers.
Thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions?
Probably the same one that I had asked before for the other ones. The, the status of the employee that had offered the alcohol. Fired, terminated?
Terminated.
Was terminated, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I may have missed that.
Was suspended, and then they have a company policy. It was a suspension, and then they go through a process, and then terminated.
Sorry, thank you.
And you were aware, you got the letter, I am assuming?
Absolutely, yes.
And so, and I'll ask the question again. Do you make it your staff aware?
Absolutely.
That these things are inevitable?
Absolutely. We, it's part of the daily conversation. And it has been, I've been on the property since October of 2012, has been, as has been my F and B director, and we're both a proponent of intense beverage awareness.
You mentioned daily shift awareness. How do you communicate that to your, to your staff? How was that communicated?
The, the shift manager, either on duty, many times Vic, the food and beverage director, is there as well. They go over what the, what the rule is. We check every ID. We look for not only the birth date, but we look for the expiration date as well. Since this has happened, we've found, I believe, two incidences where the identification that we had was the correct birth date, but not the right issuance date. So it was, it was an old ID. So we go over that every day, and we're just as intense as we, as we can be every, every single day. The message back to the staff is very clear.
Thank you.
With the information that you just, just gave us in your daily instructions to your employees, did you ask the bartender why she failed to ask for an ID from an obviously very young patron?
Yes. No excuse. It was a, a busy period in the evening. We're not typically busy on a Thursday night. We go through periods. Her reply was, geez, I thought he was one of the, the members of a company that we have in our hotel lot. She's, she thought he, she recognized him as one of the attendees who had been in the hotel before, and obviously it was not.
So it was a busy, rather busy Thursday evening as opposed to not too many people at the bar?
Typically not. I think at that particular time, we'd got a few extra people in at the time, and there was a rush. I was not there at the time, but it was a short period of the busy. But typically, Thursday nights isn't overwhelmed as would a Friday or Saturday. And it was just a poor decision-making move on that person's part.
Thank you.
I'll ask a similar question that I asked earlier also. So in addition to all of the pre-shift conversations at the workstations where the bartenders or servers go to, are there any signs or reminders that help?
The, the, yes. The information is posted that we have to check for, for everybody who is 40 or under, if they look that. And the postings are on every bulletin board that we have in the back area, the back of the house area. So I feel that we, we do do a lot to, to make it aware to everybody. And unfortunately, this, this individual made a bad decision.
How long had this individual been employed by you?
This individual had been about two years. Actually, she was one of our bar supervisors, which, again, put more of an impact on us. This individual has had a great record for the two years that she's been there. And when we told her she didn't have a job, she knew exactly why, and there were no issues.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a question, this really, I think this pertains to all the folks that are here tonight. The previous experience I had, Counselor's good to see you again. I know that he's, he's aware of this, that in the previous experience I had, that there's a, there's a machine, a verification machine that's often purchased by a lot of establishments that you utilize to verify IDs and check IDs, which gets the issue of the date being incorrect of that nature. I'm wondering if, if any of any of the establishments have considered doing that?
We've had that in front of us before, and we've, we've been told no because of expense. We've said no because, we've been told no because it jams up the system. Some places have done it. But it's, it's a little sporadic, depending on the establishment.
Yeah, some places with high volume have used it. I think, to what stadium? Have you, you have that machine in place, right?
What, at the stadium?
Yeah.
Stadium has, and Tobi has, you know, a large volume parking lot.
But also, isn't that the idea of the under 21 license, But also, isn't that the idea of the under 21 license, which is vertical as opposed to the over 21, which is horizontal, which is pretty easy to spot?
And verification only works if they ask for ID.
Right.
We've actually discussed this, this client's discussed it at length and one of the things that has come up in some instances is people totally rely on the machine and they swipe the machine and it comes out green and they actually don't look at the picture and the, and, and so if, for the most part, good hard work trumps the machine, if they, if the management staff and this management staff has been extremely diligent, but so that's one of the reasons they didn't consider a machine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll read the motion. I move that there's a finding of fact that the employee of Colen Management Incorporated DBA Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place served alcohol to a minor as outlined in the letter dated to the Board October 20th, 2014, and the Board accepts the findings of the letter as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we close the hearing for Renaissance Hotel in regard to alleged alcohol violations.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, in the memo that you presented to Bill Keegan, in which we have a copy of, there are, there's a section that talks about the range of reasonable disciplinary actions to consider, and I was wondering if you could run through these with us?
Sure.
And especially, I'm a little interested in this item number two.
Yes. Again, with respect to all of the hearings that you've conducted tonight, I wanted to just reiterate that each of these license holder has no history that we're aware of here in the town of Foxborough. I, I think advisedly, the, the first place the Board should look would be to your own rules and regulations, which are very thorough and very clear with respect to progressive discipline where and when a violation occurs. It's very clear from your, your regulations that, that this Board has the ability to impose a, up to one day suspension and, and that, or, and/or a reprimand in any of these cases where there is no history of a, of any other violations.
Three days.
Up to, I'm sorry, up to three days. That has been consistent all along here in the town of Foxborough. In addition to that, with some consultation with the Town Manager and with the Chief of Police, there has been also discussion of other options in, in these instances. And one, which I think you've already heard briefly from the manager of the Lafayette House, where it's, it's quite clear from the, from the law that it's a strict liability statute. That is, if there's delivery or sale of alcohol to an underage person, there is exposure to criminal liability. We have suggested to the, the Town Manager and to Foxborough Police, with the cooperation of the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, that if there is a complaint for criminal liability sought against the individual, there could be a greater sense of accountability on the part of servers who undertake the irresponsible action of serving a person under age 21. We could make that recommendation, it'll be up to the Foxborough Police and ultimately the District Attorney's Office if they will continue to pursue that, that avenue. But our judgment is that it's a strict liability statute, there is criminal responsibility for personal sale and delivery to an underage person.
That's independent of these proceedings?
Independent of these proceedings. Where there's clear evidence of delivery, there, there, there is a very serious criminal penalty by statute. In addition to that, we've recommended that, that there be a repeat compliance check, only this time unannounced.
Yeah.
There's been very clear testimony about the fact that there was both a publication in a newspaper and direct mail to all license holders. I think with respect to at least those that were non-compliant, in addition to all license holders, another spot check conducted by the, by the Foxborough Police would be advisable as an element or an option in the disposition of these cases. And finally, we have recommended a, a strengthening of the alcohol recertification in education classes that are routinely provided to all license holders. They're obligated by way of their issuance of a license here in Foxborough to undertake at least annual, if not more frequent, recertification. It would be reasonable as a result of, or as in part your disposition in these and other cases, to insist that that certification be provided to you, that you be, as a Board, allowed to check and inspect on how complete or thorough or how satisfactory that certification is to you as members of the Board. That's something that should be undertaken and should be undertaken at the expense of those license holders. So if, if the Board's interested, that in part is, is our recommendation. If you're ready to, to deliberate, as I said earlier, you can deliberate these cases tonight. You could take them under advisement, wait till you've heard the other cases, it's entirely at your discretion.
Dave, I just had a question on our, the sanctions for violations that, that we have. It's the last page of, of the Rules and Regulations. Under, actually, under all the, all, all three suggestions, there's the optional liquor closing hours.
Yes.
But on the memo that you gave us, on page two of the memo, it says rollback of operating hours set in accordance with Section 12 of Chapter 138 must be the subject of a separately noticed hearing as to the public need for each decree. So this would mean if, if we chose to have, reduce the liquor, change the liquor closing hours, we'd have to have a separate hearing for that?
Yes, I'm afraid to say that, that it's a little bit of a technicality.
Okay.
In that operating hours is subject to a different section of the statute.
Okay.
Than the disciplinary section that you're operating under tonight. The, the operating hours is, is, is a matter for your consideration, for the public good. It, it requires, however, a, a hearing under Section 12 as opposed to under Section 34, which is what you're operating under tonight.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion that we add to the, to, to the sanctioned violations, you know, optional hearing closing with a, a separate hearing, you know, wording to that effect, just so that everybody knows?
Yes.
About that?
So Attorney DeLuca, kind of on the same note, if, if the hours are changed, then it's a separate hearing. What about the situation where a lot of the establishments have come in, in front of the Board and asked for earlier opening days on special occasions like Patriots games or New Year's Eve? Is that the same situation?
It, it is. Under Section 12, again, you have the opportunity to make a judgment of what is in the public interest, keeping in mind safety, economy, and other concerns your Board might have. That's entirely within your discretion and really not a matter of, of discipline that you have before you tonight.
Dave, just a point of clarification, in our guidelines, we can suspend a license for up to three days. Is that, if, if we were to decide that, would those days be of the operator's choosing or could they be of the Board's choosing?
No, entirely at the Board's discretion.
Okay.
You know, there's methods of operation, if you will, when it comes to suspensions. A lot of Boards, and I think the, in the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission generally targets the, the same or similar date as where a violation occurred, as an appropriate date for, for a suspension, day of the week, for example. But there is no, there's no set rule, it's entirely at the discretion of the Board.
Thanks.
And if we ask for a suspension, that would be strictly for alcohol service and it, it doesn't close the place down, they're still able to serve food at the, at the establishment? They're, they're still open?
Yes.
But there's just no alcohol service?
It's only the alcohol license that is affected.
Okay, and how is that, how is the public notified? Is there, do they put up a sign at the door, say, oh, by the way, you know, food, yes, alcohol no tonight or something?
Yeah, they, the license is due back to the Town Hall, so there'd be no alcohol service and certainly if, you know, if, if there's a patron that asks for alcohol service, then there'll be denied alcohol service. They're, for their own convenience, may be inclined to, to provide some kind of posting or notice, or maybe not open at all.
Yeah, okay.
It's entirely a discretion of the license holder.
And on the days, if there is a suspension, are, on, on those days, do the police go and check to make sure it definitely is being suspended? Sergeant Nune, is that, Chief O'Leary, I'm sorry?
Yes, we would have officers made aware that are on that particular shift, that they don't have a liquor license and make sure that we do an inspection, walk through to see that it is.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, one of the operators asked that after, I think, two years, that this violation be expunged. Can you talk about that for me?
Yeah, that would be a highly unusual action to be taken. As, as you can imagine, the, the record of past violations is a critical piece of information for any Town Board to have at its disposal. I'm, I'm pleased to see that here in Foxborough, you have a very accurate record of, of past violations. As we said, these were not among those that were included for the last 20 years. So I, I would, I would urge the Board not to take that kind of action, it would only confuse the record going forward.
Thanks.
Attorney DeLuca, in, in the past, we've had a situation where we're reviewing a local violation from a Foxborough operation and they've been in front of us. Concurrently, there's been a situation where the state also had a violation against the establishment and the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing and I think it's set up that way. Do we have any indication that all of these establishments are not under a review right now from a state sting operation that we're not avail, we're not made aware of right now?
Yeah, I, I have no information to confirm or deny any action taken by the ABCC, independent of, of what you've heard here tonight.
Okay.
I, I just don't have any information. I, I, we certainly can check.
Okay, I think Chief O'Leary wanted to know.
Chief, can you come to the table?
Yes, that, that is a good question, Mr. DeLuis. Ordinarily, the Chief Inspector, when he has a team that's working in the community, has always provided me information of their activities and more importantly, when there's been a violation, he's also made me aware of it, you know, so that my staff is cognizant about it. So I haven't heard of anybody independently. I saw Chief Inspector Mahoney earlier this week and we've had phone conversations about some of the operations, both that they've done in cooperation with us at the Country Western Show, as well as recently he had people doing an inspection of Gillette Stadium. So he hasn't, hasn't let me know about any of these facilities having any problems.
Thank you. So I, I wish I had asked that question when the owners were up here, but it may be unusual, but I, I know everybody's still in the audience. Could I ask if that's the case, somebody would come forward and say they are under review by the state, that we're not knowing about it right now?
I can tell you, we're not under review in any way, that's the Renaissance Hotel.
The Renaissance is not?
No. Dimitris is not under any sort of review either.
Ron? Nobody?
I actually know the guy, he's a sister's way.
Chickie Flynn's.
Yeah, and I guess the last one would be Chickie Flynn's.
We're not.
Not here, okay. Thank you.
All right, so...
So if I may, as I said, I, I have had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Keegan and, and Chief O'Leary in order to provide a comprehensive recommendation to the Board whenever you're inclined to hear it, if, if you are at all.
I'd be inclined to hear it.
Well, we can, we can clear a few things off. I asked about expunging the record and I think your advice is don't even go there.
No.
Which is fine. I think unilaterally, these establishments, not the operators, but their employees, have made what I would consider to be egregious decisions, very cavalier attitude towards the serving of alcohol. And that may or may not have a reflection on the owners of these establishments, but the fact that nine establishments failed this compliance check in one night is disturbing. And they didn't even get to all the establishments in town, so you, you see a pattern. And, and that's, that's my worry is that, you know, while these may have been the first violations that, you know, the sting actually produced, clearly other violations may have taken place that a sting doesn't pick up. So it's, it's the, it's the fact that nine failed in one night is disturbing.
Chief, how frequently could you conduct unannounced stings?
Certainly, you know, we could expedite and enhance these types of activities.
Do you want to come to the table?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Certainly in discussions with Attorney DeLuca and the Town Manager, that's one of the questions that we've been asked. We could certainly accelerate and increase the number of compliance checks that we do within the community and to maybe schedule them so that we would have a higher percentage of challenges, so to speak, and not have, I believe it was 13 to 19 businesses that weren't open during the time of these compliance checks. That would certainly be on our radar and I think within our own liquor regulations, under the penalty phase, I think we had some wording as to a mandatory look back within a certain timeframe, as I recall, because within the last two years, we completely rewrote the liquor regulations. Ms. Brew was on the, the committee, we had good input from the licensees themselves to try and make them as clear as possible, both for them to follow and more importantly for us to then enforce them.
And, you know, it really strikes me that, you know, back when we were working on those regulations, we had talked about just how to collaborate with the businesses to try and always maintain this high standard that everyone is, we know is striving for. And, you know, maybe this is a time to reconvene a group to, you know, talk about, can there be additional training in terms of doing internal stings, things like that, you know, to just continue to enhance awareness of, you know, for the employees?
Going back in the community's past, we actually had a group that developed through a result of compliance checks that we did in the 90s, they called themselves Foxborough Cares. In fact, I think Ron was certainly involved, he's, you know, not quite in my age bracket, but he certainly, you know, was an active member as were other establishments in town. And they, at times, did conduct their own so-called stings and had an underage person and we had both red and green cards that they would give out, green being, you know, they were challenged and asked for ID and red, they were failed. And at the next meeting after that event, you know, there might have been some red faces if they didn't pass that amongst their own peers. And that's something that in a discussion with a couple of the people that had contacted me, was discussed. There's nothing that prevents them from helping one another be successful so that their staff is aware of it. And as Mr. DeLuca said, in future compliance checks, I've had a conversation and I'm waiting to reply from the District Attorney's Office, that perhaps will go that one step further so that the individual that makes that sale has a personal consequence instead of just slowing it off to the license holder that may, may not have had anything to do with that transaction and has been doing the right things in terms of the mandated training, the reviews, you know, prior to shift, you know, just talking about this important issue.
Thank you. David, if we were to actually go in that direction of criminal prosecution, is that something that would need to be written into the regulations or is that just totally independent of the liquor license regulations, that you could initiate that action?
Yeah, I would, I, I would recommend that the, the regulations be amended.
Be modified, okay.
But you're certainly not, and again, it's not entirely at the discretion of your Board.
Okay.
It would be as a matter of, for the, for the courts to, to determine. But what, what we were suggesting as, as part of our recommendation is that you would publicly urge the, the, the police and the District Attorney's Office to pursue that application process and then put it before those authorities to determine whether or not there's reason to pursue it.
Would it be a matter, just as, as a matter of policy, whenever you have a violation, an alleged violation like this, to submit the, the paperwork to the District Attorney's Office?
Yes, absolutely.
So is it?
And as we said at the outset, the, the facts in, in these matters are unassailable in terms of the quality of the evidence that was obtained here. There is just no question whatsoever in, insofar as the, the responsibility for that action. And I would, I would assume that the, the District Attorney's Office would, would, would accept that as, as a, as a good running start on, on pursuing a complaint.
And so that would be, and the, part of the sanctions for violations that would be noted in that, you know, the information will be sent off for further?
Right, with a, with a request or a recommendation to pursue a criminal matter.
Chairman, the, the, the most compelling piece of that, that situation is that, is the point that, that Ron had made earlier, was that, is that the person who actually made the mistake is really not even here.
Right.
And, and there's really no accountability for that, other than the fact that they lose, possibly lose their position or get suspended for some of their work.
And you hear how hard the business owners are working to keep this in compliance, so it's, it's definitely an interesting option to consider.
More accountability.
Okay, any other questions, just in general, before we start talking about the individual?
Dave, were you going to make a comprehensive recommendation?
Well, the, yes, if, if, again, we're inclined, after discussion with the Town Manager and the, and the Chief of Police, our recommendation is, is for the imposition of a one-day suspension as to each of these violators. as to each of these violators, but that it be held in abeyance for a period of six months to a year. And during that time, the Foxborough Police would do an unannounced compliance check to confirm compliance with all alcohol rules and regulations. Second, that this board would make a formal request through the Foxborough Police to the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office to pursue criminal prosecution of any violator, any person who delivers alcohol to an underage person. And three, that each of these license holders be required to report back to your board with any positive changes or results from recertification, re-education, within that same six months to one-year period, so that you can confirm that all applicable rules are being adhered to.
So you recommend a one-day suspension, but it will be held, I think you said in abeyance, until, if they fail to demonstrate that they made corrective actions, then that one-day suspension would be enforced.
Invoked, yeah. At your discretion, after hearing, of course.
So is your suggestion that say, at approximately six months, that there'd be a report from the people who fall into this category that just, you know, demonstrates what actions have been taken?
Yes.
And then, so we would have another hearing at that point?
Mm-hmm.
And determine whether they're acceptable? Okay.
And in the meantime, if, that there would be unannounced inspections, that if, in fact, we revealed any further actions, of course, that would also play into another hearing process, but obviously, any disposition involved from here would be considered as well.
Okay, so we agree that those unannounced inspections, and the police department is on board with that, those will take place within the six months?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then if they fail again, we're back at this table?
Yep.
With an entirely new issue?
That's right.
Any concerns or comments regarding the recommendation?
I'll go first, I guess. Let me just back up a little bit. I wanted to say thank you to Chief O'Leary and Sergeant Noonan. I was going to say it after the findings session, and the operative that was here tonight makes our job a lot easier when, very factual, very professional, and in my experience, it's always been that way, so thank you for making our job a little bit easier, so we're not second-guessing the process. I've had bad experiences with holding things in, if you do better, then it goes away, because we're dealing with other situations where they're coming back again after different violations. I looked at, you know, and I know some of these managers, and they're very good people, and they're very good in the community, and it's a situation where sometimes you're only as good as your staff, and I think the staff let the people down. So it doesn't take me any pleasure on getting on a soapbox and talking about, you know, children and keeping the road safe. I think we've done that before, and we keep coming back to the same place. I look at the first violation of a letter of reprimand and a suspension of three days or both, and I would, I was, and I would like to recommend a letter of reprimand and a three-day suspension. And if they do better, I don't have a lot of interest in having people come back to the board to let us know how they're doing with the new rules and regulations. I'm past that right now. I want a three-day suspension. I don't say it with any happiness, because I know these people, but at some point, someone's got to say enough, enough. If you can't ask for a license, and you can't do your job, it falls on somebody else to say, what is it going to take for you to do your job? And I think a three-day suspension, chances of them coming back with whatever rules that they have not working again, is a lot better if there's some hard punishment. And that's what I'm going to recommend to this board, that we do a three-day suspension. I'm not in the business of which days are good and which days are not for a business. They can, you know, they can pick them and choose that they want, but I'm going to recommend a three-day suspension in a letter of reprimand.
Held in abeyance, Jim?
Nope. Nope. And I was also going to suggest a sign on the bar that says, "We apologize for the inconvenience, but we will card everybody, and if we don't, let my manager know," because it feels like I'm babysitting. And again, I know these people, and it's not coming down on the owners, but what is it going to get? You know, I've heard, you know, it's great, two people were fired, and I don't know the people, but, you know, that's severe. Two people weren't, people run businesses differently, but I'm looking at it, taking the personal side out of it. We've got first violation, second violation, third violation with, that was put together by a group of people, including the chief, that spent a lot of time on this, and nowhere in here I says, "Well, here's a violation, but we'll give him a second chance, and we'll hold it for six months." And I've been through that before, and it didn't work, so I'll end it there, but I'm recommending a three-day suspension for the first violation.
John?
Yeah, we had some other violations this time last year, and I think, I could be wrong, but I thought there was four of them, and in one case, we did give one establishment a one-day suspension, and I had to recuse myself in that discussion, and I was a little bit disappointed that we allowed that operator to choose the day which they were going to close. And it happened to be a time when they normally closed in the middle of the winter anyway. It really didn't have much teeth in it. I'm with you on the suspension side. I'm not sure if three days is the appropriate amount, but the thing is, we're, and I said this earlier, the fact that nine establishments failed in one night, and the other, there was a number of establishments that weren't even visited, and I wonder, had they been visited, would we have twelve failures? I think it's time to put some teeth in the penalties. I don't mean to be, you know, cruel, but the fact is, we've given a lot of letters of reprimand, and, you know, and other people have asked for those letters to be expunged as well. I'm not sure if we did or we didn't. But I'm actually on the side that a suspension is warranted, not to say that the operators don't train their employees, and in a lot of cases, it was an employee's bad judgment, but ultimately, management is responsible for it. So I'll wait to discuss the amounts of suspension, but I am agreeable that a suspension is warranted.
David?
There's obviously a disconnect between the education and the training, and what's being filtered down to the line staff. There's forty-two liquor licenses in this town, which is a lot. Liquor licenses are not given by right. They're a privilege. There's rules and regulations, and they should be bound to. We have to send a message. Should be zero tolerance. I agree with Jim and John, that there should be suspension. Letters are a slap on the wrist. They have no value. It'll happen again. So I think we need to send a message.
Yeah, I agree. I agree that a suspension is warranted. I mean, these things happen on a Thursday evening, not a weekend, when it's very busy and mistakes can happen. It happened on a Thursday, and that was done purposely to make sure that there was no confusion. And I just cannot get over, first of all, not asking, that, not asking for a license, or if a license was provided, that license was a vertical license, far different from a horizontal license, or if it was over twenty-one. So, or the license wasn't even asked for. It's just a complete negligence on the part of the service. Letter of reprimand, definitely. And, but I do think the, I do think a three, I think a three-day suspension is, I can live with that. I was hoping for at least a minimum of one day, but I was open to, up to three, and I think if my other board members are on that same page, I go along with that, because this is, this is very serious, and we had, what, last year, there were four? This year, there were nine. I mean, when is the message going to get out? You know, it's not like this was the first time they did the sting. They've done the stings in previous years. Owner, the establishment should be expecting it. First of all, they should be just following the laws anyway and asking for ID, and if it's not a proper ID, they shouldn't be serving. So I'm okay with the three-day suspension, letter of reprimand and three-day suspension.
Thank you. David, I just want to clarify, and Chief, so at this point, the three recommendations that were provided to us initially by you, criminal charges are an actual, you know, we could actually do that at this point, initiate that? Are you saying that that's the case?
Unfortunately, you don't control whether or not the court would actually issue...
But the request...
But the request, the request that they pursue criminal charges certainly can be made from your board, yes.
I understand the frustration of the board, you know, where we find ourselves in this position, especially this year with so many of these violations happening. My concern is, you know, I sit here and I listen to how strongly the management works, how hard the management works to keep their businesses in compliance, and my concern is that, you know, these are obviously not what they wanted to have happen, and I think sending the message to the owners, we're kind of missing the mark. It's the employees, I think, that have to be brought up to that same level of accountability. And again, I think making that request, to have that considered for criminal prosecution is, to me, I think, a better way to send a message as to how serious this board takes I believe that each business in this case, this is their first violation, many of them, you know, have no history at all, maybe there's one twenty years ago for one of them. I'm just concerned that we have to balance our expectation of accountability with what's the reality that the business owners are dealing with here, and so I would support, I think, the recommendation from the chief and council and town manager that a one-day suspension held in abeyance. I could be open to a one-day suspension, but, you know, initiating that criminal, the request for criminal prosecution, and, you know, I think the different ways that each of the businesses handle their business in terms of whether or not they keep those employees on, that's the, they have established their level of risk tolerance, and so if another sting occurs and they have another problem, that's a whole different story, so...
Well, Lorraine, when these owners are granted a license by this board, they, and they've been in this business for a long time, they know the responsibilities of that license, and ultimately, the responsibility to select and train employees is borne by them.
Right.
Now, occasionally, there'll be an outlier, and occasionally, there'll be an employee that shuts their brain off, but ultimately, you know, while the employee, if it was that egregious that it warranted investigation by the police to see if there was a crime committed by serving alcohol, we're here to determine whether or not the establishment trained or selected their employees properly. And in all these cases, the fact that the attitude, looking at a, you know, a very young man, in cases, they looked at the license and ignored it, or they didn't look at it at all. You know, and what causes an employee to just be that cavalier about it? Is that a reflection on them personally, or a reflection on the establishment? And I think it's shared. So that's why I'm of the mind that a suspension is warranted.
So I understand what you're saying, you know, that's why I think I would be open to a one-day suspension, but again, I don't want to ignore the fact that we have to hold the employee who's going to put the employer in this risky position, that they will be held accountable potentially, in some manner, other than walking off and getting a job at the next bar down the block.
Yeah, I have no problem with that at all. I think that's actually an interesting mechanism, one that we hadn't heard before.
I think that's what concerns me a little bit, is it is interesting, and two, we have not heard it before. And the third part is, I haven't met any of these bartenders. We're hearing it second and third hand. That's not under our control. We can make a recommendation to the district attorney or the police chief to pass it, but I don't have a lot of faith that it's going to actually get to court and it's going to be, I just don't know. It's an interesting concept. I wish I had known about it earlier from last instances, but I don't want to hang my hat on saying, "All right, we're going to be tough, and we're going to make recommendations for criminal prosecution," and then by eight-thirty tomorrow morning, we get letters from all of their attorneys saying it's not possible because of statute X, Y, and Z. So that information would have been nicer to have, so I can think about it. So I don't want to go in that direction and get satisfaction that it can happen, and then lose sight of the fact of the things that we do have control over.
I think it's a, I'm viewing it as a combination, you know, a suspension. Up until this point, you know, again, we've always had these options. We have typically, for the first infraction, issued a letter of reprimand with no suspension. I think we're taking it a step further this year, talking about suspension related to the first offense, and...
Well, last year, there was a first offense that we did give a suspension to.
Last year?
Yeah.
That was the first time?
Yeah, I think three of the violations got a letter of reprimand, and one got a one-day suspension. Do I have that right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, I remember the one.
Country Club.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
But, you know, I look at, I try to look at these individually, but I also look at in the context of the community, and, you know, five years ago was different than it is now. And two years from now, you know, we're talking about getting more liquor licenses. So this, these rules and regulations were written not too long ago, which were a lot different than what was there a few years ago, and things have changed even in the last year.
Right.
So I just keep going back to the, if something happened, and we didn't do anything that's in our control to address it on a community-wide basis, how do you answer that when someone gets killed in the, you know, an eighteen-year-old kid drives out and kills somebody, and we're sitting there arguing about, well, which piece of paperwork can we do and not do? I think a suspension, when they leave this room, is going to change their business to the better, from a community perspective. And again, I don't take pleasure in it, and I, and, excuse me?
Sorry.
Oh, I thought you said, "Yes, I do."
No.
Oh. I don't like this. I don't like sitting here in judgment, but this is our job, and this is what we were given by that group that you were sitting on that says, "These are our options." And there's nothing in here that says abeyance. It actually says, "The board may modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel a license, and here are your steps to do it." So if we wanted to, we could cancel it tonight. We could revoke it.
Cancel? No, we can't. I don't think so, because I think our actions have to be viewed...
Removable license.
Progressive. Progressive discipline.
All right.
Yeah, there would have to be a fourth violation to revoke it.
So at least, let's follow the steps with the guidance of the committee that put this together and say, "Let's focus on the progressive steps then, in the first violation," and I go back to what I'm recommending.
You know, when people come before us for a new license or a change of manager, this board always says, "Now, remember, the Board of Selectmen, we're very, we're very strict about licensing, and we will hold you to a standard." Well, we really have not been holding them to a standard. If you're going to hold them to a standard, then you do for the first violation, a letter of reprimand, and up to three days for suspension. That's a standard. And I think, and it's not like this is the first time we've done this. This is a yearly sting that we do, and the restaurants and bars have been here for a while. They know, they know it's coming. They get a letter saying it's coming. So at what point does the board ignore the fact that the bartenders ignored the rules and regulations of the town and of the state? You have to be twenty-one to drink. You have to show ID. You have to have a horizontal ID to be over twenty-one, a vertical to be under twenty-one. I don't know what's so hard about that, and that's why I agree that it's time... about that. And that's why I agree that it's time the Board of Selectmen actually does what it says it's going to do. It's going to be strict in its interpretation of the regulations in regard to violations.
Madam Chair, I've heard, based on the discussions tonight, I've heard three options that are under consideration at this point. First is a letter of reprimand with three-day suspension. Second is a letter of reprimand with a one-day suspension. Third is a letter of reprimand with a one-day suspension held in abeyance. I think the underlying theme was that there was support, general support for the notion of trying to address the issue of pursuing the criminal action. I think there was general support for that, but I did not hear anyone saying that we couldn't do it. It's just that there was concern about it as well.
Can we do that, even if it's not in our regulations and other, we don't have saying, "Are subject to criminal investigation?"
Yes. It certainly would be a firmer position to take if it were part of your regulations, but as with any potential criminal violation, there needn't be a regulation that would justify the pursuit of a criminal complaint. So to answer your question, sure, it could be a matter that you would request be brought forward, examined, and thoroughly pursued and vetted at this moment in time, sure.
Yeah, well, I would make a suggestion that maybe it not be included in this series of, and amend these regulations and include it next year, so that the operators and the board know that that's a possibility. So I would take that off the table.
One of the things that we had, I understand your position on that. The, one of the things that we had talked about was that, at the very least, a discussion with the district attorney's office to try and gain support on that end, that if, in fact, we are going to pursue something like this, that we would get their support as well.
And then you can come back to the board and brief us on those discussions.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay. So those are the range of options that you have on the table before you. I think as an action, the board, perhaps you could ask for support on option one, option two, option three, and to see where the board ends up on. That's why you want to proceed.
So you're saying you have a motion for each option?
So there'd be a motion for option one, and then a second, and see if there's all in favor, and if there is, and if you already have a majority, at that point, there's no reason to go to options two or three.
Okay. So option one would be a letter of reprimand and three-day suspension. I'll make a motion that that is the suggested sanction.
Second.
All those in favor? Four in favor, one opposed? So it sounds like that's where we're going.
That's your action.
All right.
One other point of clarification, I had asked this earlier, is when it comes to assigning the dates for suspensions, what's the mechanism for that?
That is the board's discretion. It's at the board's discretion.
Okay. And I'll make a recommendation, given that the, you know, I would say Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday would not have much of an impact. I would suggest having a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or is another option. And I think this would go a little bit too far, would be to have subsequent Friday nights. But I'm going to make a recommendation that we choose a time in the calendar for a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night suspension.
Any other comments?
I think, and even though I made the motion, three days is a hefty, I don't think anybody came in here expecting three days. It is an impact. It is a business change that they're going to have to make, because they're going to have to serve food without alcohol, and some people may just turn around and not come in. I'm okay with having them pick the days as a transition into what I think is a harsh penalty. And maybe one day on the weekend.
I think we have to be cognizant of functions at some of these establishments that could impact, you know, paying customers and large parties. So we should take that into consideration.
Jenny?
Yeah, Dave makes a good point. And I don't want to be draconian on this. I would not, I don't think I'd want a Friday, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, that's the busiest times. But I think at least one, one day, like on a weekend, like Jim suggested, would be appropriate.
At that choice, so there's no conflict with the function.
Right.
And I am...
So they get to choose the weekend?
Yes, but on that same note, I am disappointed if you're saying there was one establishment that picked a day in the middle of the winter where they've got no business. You know, shame on us for not understanding that that was the option that they were going to go through.
But that's why, if the operator gets to choose the date, generally, they're going to choose the date what has to have the least amount of impact on their business.
Correct, but there's three dates on this, so cumulatively, it does...
And a hybrid approach isn't all that bad.
I just want to mention that I know that we had heard typically, you could look at potentially having that day of suspension be the same day of the week that this violation occurred on. This is a Thursday night. You know, I'd suggest that it be a Thursday night, again, to their choice, if they have functions already in place. So we wouldn't want to interfere with that, but then to have them pick the other two nights, because this is a tremendous impact on their businesses.
Bill had a comment.
Madam Chair, just a suggestion, I did confer to council on this, that perhaps that the establishments could advise the board as to what the dates would be. You have another meeting scheduled for the week, next week, I believe? The 18th?
The 18th or the 19th?
I believe it's the 18th.
We're here on the 19th.
19th.
Could they advise the board through council?
Yes, they could advise their board through council. They could send us a letter indicating what dates they are, and then the board could approve that, and then invoke that action that night, because there was an appellate right process that we have to be cognizant of as well. And whatever action this board takes is subject to appeal. Just be mindful of that.
Yeah, and it would be necessary, as you can imagine, for the license holder to know exactly which of the dates are being imposed, because that, you know, is relevant to their choice of whether or not they would appeal, depending, you know, on various things. So they have the need to know that in order for the appellate right to begin to run.
So I think what they're hearing from this table, if the people are trying to figure out which day is, I think one of the days needs to be a weekend. And I hate for people to put lists together and come back and having to do this over again.
Well, how far off could they push this? I mean, could they push this off until the end of February?
They don't get to push anything. It's your board that decides when and if the suspension would be imposed.
But they're going to offer dates.
We're suggesting that that might be one way to try to resolve this particular issue, is if they come back to us with what they would suggest, again, not prejudicing their right of appeal, because they still would have a right of appeal, but if they come back to us with what they think is reasonable for a three-day suspension, your board could consider it, and then make a determination, and we'd need to make a determination on each of the individual license holders.
So could we suggest a time limitation, say, the dates occur prior to January 31st, something like that?
Surely, yeah, you could.
Sixty days, within sixty days of tonight?
And is that acceptable, January 31st?
I think that's reasonable.
All right.
So January 31st would be the upper limit?
Right. So then you should motion that we'll be expecting from the license holders some suggestion as to those dates for suspension, on or before July, January 31st of 2015.
And weekends do not include Sundays, just to clarify that.
Okay.
All right. So can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to, as part of the violation phase, to require a three-day suspension of sale of all alcohol, plus a letter of reprimand, three days to be held, three days to be agreed to by the board with a recommendation from the license holder. And those three days shall be held prior to January 31st, 2015.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, one of which of those days will be a weekend.
And one of those, one of those days will be a weekend, Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're back here on the 19th, where we have the ability to consider that, along with the additional hearings we have scheduled for that night. There will be the matter to take up as well, whether or not you will issue a stay. Once you do set the dates, the board will need to decide whether or not it will agree to a stay of the imposition of the suspension itself, given right to, or time to pursue the appeal.
Can you explain that?
In every, in every instance where you issue a suspension, there's a right of appeal or hearing before the ABCC. It's an appeal that needs to be noticed within five days after the imposition of your suspension. If the suspension is scheduled to go into effect imminently, typically, the ABCC doesn't have the ability to hear that appeal within the first, say, 30, 60, or even 90 days. So it's incumbent upon the license holder to make a request to your board, whether or not you would consider a stay of that penalty during the time the appeal is pending.
I see.
Again, it's, we're unable to tell you how long it would take for an appeal to be heard, but at a minimum, it's, you know, 30, 60, 90 days out before we could have a hearing before the ABCC.
I could see that happening for revocation of a license, to have it reviewed.
Just to be clear, council just reminded me that it's five days in respect to what, I think Dave is correct, it's five days, but within a written, within, five days within a written, we see them written.
Right.
Written decision. So whatever action comes out of the 19th will be put into the form of a letter, that will be then issued to the various license holders, and they will have five days from that, we see that letter, to exercise their right of appeal.
Okay.
Very good.
Do we need to make any further individual motions, or?
No, I think once we've got some advice from license holders, if they choose to provide us with that information, then you can go about finalizing, if you will, the decision.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate all of the advice and your work, Ed and Sergeant Noonan, thank you. And thanks, Bill.
Most unfortunate news, but...
Yeah. So, no other business?
Just to advise the board on another matter, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to ask you to take any action tonight, but I did provide you with copies of your, of the proposals, council proposals. I did provide you also a letter, a sort of a suggestion process, and then we could have a discussion of it, perhaps at the, at your meeting on the 18th, so if there's any further. But we have some time to work on this, because it's, we did not say that the council would be effective until March 1st. So you've got, perhaps during the month of January, you could actually hold some interviews. December looks pretty tough at this point, so we just wanted to plan that accordingly. But I think it would be good to have the process in place, so we can at least let people know, so they can plan accordingly. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. Have a good night.
See you next week.